Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00, and I want to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. Will you please stand with me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just a heads up to the council with everything that's going on with COVID-19. It's been changing really hourly, especially today, it's been changing hourly. And as a city, we have put out a statement, and I will read that. We're actually going to have discussion about it. I'm going to interject the discussion, if that's okay with you, right after we give our reports. So, when doing the, let's see, the approval of the agenda, I know that the uniforms, it's one that's going to be added, I think, Jared, you want to add that? And then, if you don't mind, also adding the discussion about the COVID virus. Okay? All right, so let's move on. So, roll call, Cheryl isn't here, do okay?
So, I'll go ahead and do roll call, with Cheryl being absent. So, councilmember McGoughan, present. Councilmember Corningay.
Here.
Councilmember Kinzer.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Councilmember DeYoung.
Present.
And councilmember Couch.
Present.
Okay, so approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to add the late materials, reference uniform services for the fire department to the consent agenda.
Yes.
And also add the COVID-19 discussion after our council reports.
All right. Second. Okay. So, I have a motion by councilwoman Couch, seconded by councilwoman Corningay, adding to the agenda itself, the uniforms, the uniforms by the fire department, and also discussion of the COVID virus, yeah, COVID-19 virus. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Consent agenda. And this, of course, will include the uniforms.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Questions, I had questions posed to me on consent agenda 5 and 8 about new trucks.
Okay.
And just to get some more information about why new trucks and not possibly used trucks.
Okay. So, why don't we go ahead and, well, no, let's approve this, and I'll poll them.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Actually, actually, let's just go ahead and have the discussion on it, and then if we want to pull them all together, or if continue on, we can do that, then we do the consent agenda.
Whatever's best.
Yeah, my apologies.
My worst.
My apologies. So, contract, possible contract award for the 2024, is that the one you're talking about, councilmember DeYoung?
Number 5 and number 8.
Okay. All right.
So, our ERNR program seeks to track and provide funding for replacement of equipment when it reaches the end of its useful life. We program the ERNR for the original purchase price plus 2% per year inflation for the year that we anticipate replacing it. Both of the vehicles these are replacing are considerably older than that. We've been playing catch-up on our fleet over the last 10 years, basically, and we generally did keep equipment until it fell apart. We actually still do that, for the most part. And so, these are just our normal sequence, although I will say about the F-450, that particular truck is replacing a 3/4-ton pickup, and we're upgrading that truck. That is the one that is for our sewer department's collections crew. One thing that we're encountering with the advent of the flushable wipes in our system, you may have seen an article on this, there was one in the news last week, the flushable wipes are causing us considerable ragging problems in our pump stations. And whereas before, it was quite adequate to have just a hand winch to pull the pumps out, we're finding we're doing that at least weekly now, and we have 12 different pump stations we maintain, so it's fairly frequent operation now to pull those out. So, this particular truck is the chassis, and we'll have another one, which I mentioned in the memo, for a flat bed with a auto crane lift on it that will allow the crew to do that safely without endangering themselves pulling those heavy pumps out that frequently. That's really the genesis behind that particular purchase being quite a bit more than the original ERNR budget for it. So, again, this is just our normal sequence for repairing and replacing. We had been deferring some of these for a number of years. We, as you know, we've had some rather major purchases of fire apparatus and trash vehicles over the last three or four years, so we've just gotten to the point where this, there was a lot of them that were overdue, and we've got them all at once here now, and it's a big purchase, but it fits well within our ERNR system. We have more than adequate funding to do this this year and maintain our minimum fund balance.
Great. And Mark, thank you so much for bringing up about the hand wipes, too, because as we see people using more of the wipe downs for counter services, et cetera, that's a great point, that they shouldn't, those aren't flushable, and that those need to be put in the rubbish bin, not the recycle bin or down the sewer system, but in the trash.
Yes, and actually, there was a bill on the legislative agenda, it made it through the early stages, I didn't hear if it passed today, that would require the boxes to be labeled whether those are flushable or not. They are kind of in a small print, but a lot of people don't realize that, and they do cause considerable problems.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, so I am looking for approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. So, I have a motion by councilman DeYoung, seconded by councilman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, if we could get Erin to come forward.
So, I have to say, it was much easier at the open house, I don't know why, because I knew it wasn't the last time that I would have this opportunity to honor you. I've had the opportunity to do that for a week, and I got to tell you, it's really been my pleasure to honor Erin for everything that he has done for the city over the last 14 years. Erin has served under four mayors, I'm the fourth, I'd like to think I'm the best, because Erin has been very gracious, and one thing that I brought up today was, nobody tells you or provides for your information how to be a mayor. When you step in, you just jump in and you swim, and you do the very best you can. And Erin had provided great guidance, and provided me the opportunity to really grow and to spread my name, and to make mistakes, and just to keep moving forward. But more than that, it's not just mayor, it's what Erin has done for the city. So, for 14 years, Erin has actually been a very strong and yet quiet leader, because I think the sign of a true leader is when you have departments who can go off and do the things that they need to do, and it looks seamless without somebody who's standing over there and telling them what to do, which he didn't. If you have a great leader, they allow departments or departments to shine and do what they need to do. And we've had known great successes in the city of Seidrawoli, because Erin, you have shown that kind of great leadership, where you've had faith in people, you've given advice, given guidance, great energy, lots of great ideas, which is why I think you're going to be fantastic in Port Townsend. I think you really need somebody over there, and you're very fortunate to have someone like you. So, I just want to say on behalf of myself and the council that we're very, we're excited for you, we're sad to see you go. We know that the beginnings are fantastic, it's a new beginning for you, it's a new beginning for us, and we issue nothing but success and adventures and blessings and the opportunity to create jobs, projects that you'll be remembered for, for a long time, because you will be remembered here for the successes here. In case you didn't remember, it's being thrown back in our face, in case you didn't remember that recession that we had, it just didn't seem to end, and it took forever to recover, it was actually Erin's brilliance that helped carry us through in times that were really challenging. So, I just can't, this seems inadequate, I got to say, 14 years, we give you a clap, and it's a grateful appreciation for your outstanding leadership, dedication, and commitment to excellence. Thank you for going above and beyond in serving citizens of Seidrawoli. Thank you.
I appreciate all of your kind words, and celebration this afternoon was over the top. Thank you for that. It's been a humbling experience since I announced my departure. I've gotten lots of compliments and positives, and so much appreciation. I guess probably the most important thing that I'd want to share is, you know, none of my successes were mine, they were all ours. And what we did in this last 14 years really truly was the result of a fully integrated team, good leadership, and excellent staff who executed the issues of the day. So, you know, whether I let them just do their thing, I would say they do their thing because they know what they're doing. And it was just absolutely fun for me to get to be part of all of these different projects, working with our team, little things and big things, issue of the day, the dreams of tomorrow, all of it. And I've enjoyed every bit of it, and I will miss Seidrawoli, and I put it all in the packet, because I wasn't sure I'd actually be able to, you know, say farewell, but thank you.
Thank you. So, we have with us now the Skagit PUD general manager, George Sidhu, who is going to give us a presentation about the upcoming Skagit PUD projects, and I think it's fitting that you were here tonight, given that Erin is on the board with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think it is really fortunate that I was here, on the same view that Erin is departing. I'll mention a little bit about that later, because this is still, I think I might have turned it off, George.
There we go. The microphones at the PUD blink either red or green, and so this one wasn't blinking, so I'm not quite used to it. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is George Sidhu, I'm the general manager at Skagit PUD. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about Skagit PUD and the neat things we have going on. The presentation is called securing a water feature, a better, building a secure water feature, and so what I want to do is talk about some of the projects that we have going on, share with you some background information about the PUD, for those of you that don't know a lot about what's going on. And as I go through my presentation, feel free to interrupt me with questions. I'll have some time at the end, I'll hopefully get through this in about 15 minutes or so, and so you can save your questions, or feel free to interrupt me as well. Oh, did it go? Okay. Not too far. There we go. Hope we're not in anybody's way, so you can still see what's going on. Just a little bit of information about the PUD, just to provide some perspective. We own and operate nine different water systems in Skagit County. I think people are most familiar with our large Judy system here in the Lower Valley, which is highlighted on this map in blue, and that covers the three main cities in most of the Lower Valley. But we do also operate eight other systems up and down, especially going up Highway 20. We own systems in Marble Mount, Rockport, Cedar Grove, Skagitview Village. We own and operate a system in Alja, as well as over on Queeness Island. We take salt water and convert that to drinking water for our Potlatch Beach Water System. And then, we also purchase water from City Van Acortus and sell water to customers on Fidalgo Island. So, we do cover a large area. We have about 30,000 service connections, and we serve approximately 80,000 people. So, that's the majority of the population in the county. We do have a board of three commissioners, one of which I think you're very familiar with, you just finished honoring him, and I guess I'll just interrupt this for a second to say that, you know, Erin's been on our board for about three years, just over three years, and it's been an honor working with Erin and for Erin. He is, I'll echo your words, Mayor, he's been a leader for us as well, and he's helped spearhead a number of initiatives and projects that have really helped us move forward. And so, it's been fun working with Erin, it's going to be sad to see him go, but I know it's for better opportunities, and we're better off for having Erin work with us for three years, and we're hoping to move forward and continue the successes that he's instilled in our organization as well. Just again, some more background on our system. So, for the large Judy system that serves the Lower Valley, we get water from Judy Reservoir, and so that's where the name comes from, for the Judy system. So, there's a large impoundment up in Clear Lake that stores a lot of our raw water, that comes either from the Cultus Mountains, or it comes from the Skagit River. And so, it's a 1.5 billion gallon reservoir, and so it provides a lot of redundancy and reliability for our system, in case the creeks or the river are a little bit turbid, depending on the rainfall and what's going on. We can store water here, and we can push it through our treatment plant, and we always make sure we have the highest quality water to get through our treatment plant and into our system. We have a treatment plant of capacity of 24 million gallons a day, but our average day demand right now is only about eight. There's a, our water rights or our water rights and our capacity of our treatment plant aren't quite what you would think in terms of the capacity that we have. When we look at our water rights as being 35.8 million gallons a day, and our demand only being eight, our limitations are getting water into the reservoir, not necessarily delivering down the pipe. We like to keep this reservoir full, and whenever we have an opportunity to take water from the river or from the creeks, we try and pump as much water as we can to make sure that we always have a reserve of water up in Judy Reservoir. One of our goals in our strategic plan is to focus on our customer-focused services, and we are primarily a water service company. We do have sewer authority, although we don't have any sewer customers, and we also have fiber authority, dark fiber. I'm not going to get into the details of that, if there's questions that people have, I can answer that, but we are a member of an LLC with a port of Skagit to deliver a fiber backbone within the county. But primarily, we focus on water, and we are making a lot of strategic investments in our water system, and that's why I want to turn to as far as talking to you tonight. I talked to you about some projects that we have done, and things that we're going to be working on, that are really going to set us up for lifecycle replacements. I know Mark was talking about vehicles and going through life cycles, and our water system is in, we are at the point in our water system where we're making a lot of investments in our system to provide for the next generation of customers that we have. There we go. So, the investments that we're making, I'll give you some statistics. So, in the last four years, we spent roughly $60 million on capital projects. In the next three years, we'll spend about $70 million, and in the span of the next 10 years, we'll spend about $160 million. So, that's a lot of money, it's a lot of projects that our staff is working on, and as I said, they're mostly lifecycle replacement projects. There's some projects that we're doing where we're replacing water lines on McLean Road, for example, and it's the third time that we're putting a water line in. There's one put in in the '40s, there's one put in in the '70s, and now we're doing another one. So, a lot of lifecycle replacement projects. One thing that we did in order to fund this major capital program for the next 10 years, is everything all right? Okay. One thing we did in order to set ourselves up for making these investments is that we did a cost of service analysis. And so, that's something that a utility has to go through every once in a while, and make sure that they're charging their customers the appropriate cost for their service. And so, we did that this past year as well. So, when you come into the PUD and you're asking for new water service, and we tell you how much it's going to cost to hook up, and what the system development fee is, we just went through a study to get those costs as accurate as we could. We also then went through a rate study. So, we have now, this is the first time we ever did this, where we've, we have a five-year projection on what the rates are going to be. So, instead of doing it year by year and trying to figure out what the rates are going to be, with our board's leadership, we were able to determine what we needed for capital investment, and then turn that into our rate program. And so, we have accountability, and we know what we're going to be doing for the next five years for rates. So, that's very helpful for us, so we know what kind of revenue we're going to get, and we know what kind of projects we're going to be able to work on. So, that was really a highlight of our last year when we did our capital planning. So, just to talk about a couple of projects, or some projects that we're going to be working on through this capital program, the treatment plant, this is a photo of the treatment plant that's up at Judy Reservoir, it was built in 1990, and so it's 30 years old, it doesn't need replacement, we have plenty of capacity, as I mentioned earlier, but there are lifecycle replacement projects that we're working on here. We just finished doing a condition assessment, and we looked at the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, the treatment, the process, and we're investing a significant amount of money at this plant, because all the water that's delivered to the Lower Valley through the Judy system goes through this plant. So, it's very important for us to make improvements for the next 30 years. Another significant project that we're, the project that we're going to be working on is a transmission line. So, I don't expect you to see what's going on here on this map. This is a alternative, route selection alternative map between Judy Reservoir and the city of Mount Vernon. So, this summer, we're going to bid on five miles of 36-inch pipeline between Judy Reservoir and the city of Mount Vernon. It's a pipeline that's 50 years old, and it's outlived its useful life. Last year, we had two breaks on this line, you've probably read about it or heard about it. So, fortuitously, we were in the middle of designing this, and so we're almost finished with the design, it's going to go to construction, and this is going to be a major project for us, one of the most expensive projects that we've done, really important project for the city of Mount Vernon and south. As part of our capital plan, when we're finished with this transmission line, we're going to turn our attention to the other transmission line, which is the Seidrawoli Transmission Line. So, this project will be done probably in 2022. After that, we're going to look at the main transmission line that goes from Judy Reservoir into the city of Seidrawoli, and look at capacity and alignment and designing a new pipeline, because that's also 50 years old. So, these are the kinds of projects, large, major capital projects that are setting us up for the future. Another one of our strategic goals is communication with public and partners, and so I'm an example of this goal. This isn't something that we typically do, again, with the board's leadership and Aaron's convincing, we thought, you know, coming once a year to our local agencies and giving them a report on what's going on at the PUD, what kind of projects we're working on, field questions from council, I want to create the relationship where you feel comfortable coming to me and asking me about what's going on at the PUD. So, this is part of our communication with our partners, you are all our partners, just like the other cities in the county is. So, we're making a significant effort in this area as part of our strategic goals. Our vision is to be an outstanding regional leader, and that's what we want, that's what we expect of ourselves, and we want our customers to think that as well. Things that we do, things that we're doing now, we're holding tours up at Judy Reservoir, so I think that some of you have come on the tour. This year is the year after an election year, so we're going to be holding more elected officials' tours later this summer, so you'll probably be getting another invitation. We bring legislators, other elected officials up there, because we want to educate and inform people about what we do, where your water comes from, give you the opportunity to ask us questions, so that you can respond to your constituents with the information that you need, or you can just ask me, and I can get back to them. We do hold school tours up there as well. We're part of the local education curriculum for a lot of the elementary and middle schools, so we come up there. This is a photo of a bunch of kids that come up there, and they look through microscopes, we teach them about the water cycle, teach them the value of water, and so that's been really beneficial for the kids and for our staff to go through that. So, again, that's dealing with the public, and we think that's, it's a kind of a change in what we're doing, but we think it's a really positive change. One of the other things, as I mentioned, we want to be an outstanding regional leader, and we want to be regional problem solvers. And so, there, there we go. I'm sure you're all aware of some of the water supply issues that exist in Skagit County, people not being able to drill wells on their property, not having illegal access to water. So, one of the best solutions to that problem is public water, piped water, and that's a solution that we can help provide. And so, we've been working with Department of Ecology, and we are proposing a series of projects to do water line extensions into areas that don't have other means of legal access to water. So, we've got three projects that we're asking for funding from the state to fund these water line extensions, to be able to get water into areas that otherwise don't have access to water. The first one is on Little Mountain Road in Mount Vernon, and we developed this project, we went to the state to get the funding for it, we got the design money for this project, so we're in the middle of designing this right now. Next year, we're going to go back to the state and ask for the construction money. And it's one solution to these rural water supply issues. There's not a silver bullet solution, there's not one thing that's going to fix all of them, but this is one of the solutions that will work, and piped water is supported by all the other agencies that are involved in these decisions, and so we think this is a really good solution. We're looking forward to implementing this as a pilot, because we have two other projects that we think would also be beneficial down in Conway. So, there's three projects right now that we're looking at, the Little Mountain Road is a pilot, we hope it's successful, we think it will be, if we get the state support, if we get legislative support, and then if that's successful, we'll move down into Conway, and there's two other projects down there, which, they are rural projects, so you don't get the density that you do in cities, so it's hard to really get the bang for the buck when you're looking at how many people you can hook up, but these are, these are the only solutions that we have, they're rural issues, people live a quarter mile or half mile apart, and it's tough to get the density that you want, but unless, unless you come with piped water, there's no other solutions in these areas. So, we really like these projects, and we're looking forward to being regional problem solvers with these. Some of the other things that we're doing, bulk water fill stations. So, we are just about ready to open our third bulk water fill station here in Seidrawoli on Minkler Road. So, we have one on Bow Hill, we have one in Conway, and we're going to open one here in Seidrawoli later this month. And they provide means for access to bulk water. It can be city flushing trucks, it can be contractors, but it's meant, it was originally meant as drought relief. For people that have wells that dry up in the summer, they can come with a tanker, or they can hire somebody to come and get water, and put the water either into their well or into their system for them to use as drinking water at their house, or just for other uses. So, again, these are regional solutions that we're trying to make available to our customers. You might recognize, I think it's the two photos on the right that are on Minkler Road, just right by the PSE substation. What else are we doing? We're working with our agricultural customers. Twice in the last five years, there were droughts declared in the state, in '15 and in '19, and in both of those situations, our agricultural industry suffered because they weren't able to irrigate. And so, we worked with them, we worked with the Department of Ecology, and our other partners locally, the city of Van Acortus and the tribes, and we were able to get irrigation water temporarily transferred to the irrigators to allow them to continue irrigating their crops. So, those are things that we're continuing to work on. It's not always in a drought year that they need irrigation, and so we're continuing those conversations with them, so that they're able to thrive. Agriculture is really important in Skagit County, it's important that they get the water that they need, so we're going to keep working on those. One other thing that we've done this year is implemented a special water rate for ag customers. customers. So it's significantly less than what the regular rate is because they're high consumers of water. And so it's nice to give them a little bit of a break. It still covers all of our costs. It's not a gift, but it allows people that use a considerable amount of water to save thousands of dollars a year on their, on their water consumption. They have to qualify to get that rate. They have to be, they have to go to the county and meet the requirements of agricultural industry and they have to meet our cross connection requirements. But it's something that we, I think is really beneficial. We're getting a lot of interest in that. So again, another regional issue that we're trying to be involved with. That's the last of the slides, but I do want to mention some, some things that we're working here locally on. And so I'm going to jump ahead of a question that the mayor was going to ask, but we do own some property in Seidrawoli down at Riverfront Park. There used to be a well at the ball fields and we recently surplus that property with the intention of transferring it to the city. We don't have any use for that property. It's more of a maintenance concern for us. And I think it's a lot of confusion for the city and the residents that live here as far as taking care of the park. So that's something that, once we work through the agreement in the next few weeks, we can get that transferred.
And we're very grateful for that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it just, it makes sense. That's one of those things that should have been done a while ago and we just never took care of it. And then there also is, I was talking to the chief earlier, we're in the process of making agreements with all the cities as far as fire hydrants are concerned. So fire hydrants are connected to the water system. We'd like to be more in control of who's working on the hydrants, how they're being maintained, just all the connections along with them. So we have an agreement in place with the city of Mount Vernon. This year, they transferred all their fire hydrants to us for us to maintain. And we want to continue that relationship with our other local partners. So I'll be talking to you guys and I'll be talking to the city of Burlington and Skagit County as far as putting the onus of the maintenance back on the PUD so that we know that they're being maintained on a regular schedule.
And I think there's also contamination, right? Concerned about contamination. So in lieu of COVID-19, this is really, it's kind of appropriate that you would bring that up.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of concerns of having multiple people working on hydrants just because they don't understand what all the concerns are, whether it's cross connections, just the maintenance of it and knowing what to do and what not to do. So we feel a lot more comfortable being in, in control of that maintenance to make sure that things are being done. And our responsibility to each of the cities is that when your fire truck rolls up to a hydrant, that it works. And it doesn't matter how it gets done. That's the bottom line and that's what our intent is. So those are some of the local things that we're working on. But that's it as far as what I was going to present. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, hi George. I have several. About how many miles of pipe do you have? About 600 or so?
It's about 600 miles of pipe, yes.
Okay. And about, how many employees do you have there at the PUD these days?
I think we're up to 82 employees. We've, we're ramping up for a lot of these capital projects we have going on. So we've added at least three people in the last year just to help us with that.
Nice. And then the frequency of testing, because I know you do daily testing up there of our water quality. So could you talk a little bit about that?
At the treatment plant, that's correct. We, we conduct routine tests at different stages of our treatment process that happen continually. And I think with, around the distribution system, we have, we perform daily tests, a lot of different kinds of tests with staff. And you'll see them out, out there taking the test. I can't quote you, you know, how many tests we do a day or how many a year, but yes, it's constantly monitored, especially at the treatment plant.
Right. And then we talked about coronavirus and just things are happening, like we all got the alert here that the NBA or National Basketball Association is suspending its season over concerns. So that's a huge business. We've got a lot of small businesses of like five or under or under $5 million. And there's concern about being able to pay utility bills on time and looking forward to, you know, what are going to be some of those solutions that we could work together as stakeholders, not only with the PUD, but with the city, Cascade Gas and PG Sound Energy as to finding relief, temporary relief for folks during this, you know, basically act of God or this disruption in business.
Yeah. And as, as we spoke earlier and as I mentioned to you, we did get a question today from a local television station about relief for billing for customers. And we haven't had any requests, but it is something for us to think about now. I think that is going to be a concern in the next couple of months if people are not being able to work or if their businesses aren't being supported and, you know, they, they run into issues with being able to pay a bill. And that's something I think we're going to have to bring up with our board here coming up soon. But I think that's, it's definitely a possibility and something that we would need to address. We don't have anything in place right now, but it's definitely going to be part of the conversation. I will mention though, with everything that's going on, we've been keenly aware of all the updates and how it affects us. We've been getting continual emails from Department of Health, all the different agencies that we report to. And, you know, we've got, we've been looking at our business continuity plan because for us, it's not an option of going to work or not going to work. We need to man that treatment plant. It's important that our operators stay healthy. So we're, we're limiting travel for our, our staff. We're reducing the number of public events that we have even up at the treatment plant as well as at our office. So we're trying to be mindful without being panicky about what's going on because we know that our, our jobs are important and it's important for people to continue getting the water that they need because it's something you can't live without. So we are being mindful of all of that. Yeah.
Anyone else?
George, just a quick question. You're primarily water providers.
Correct.
I remember about 15 years ago, there was the big push for fiber optics. How much was that play on, we're siphoning from the water?
They're set up in our financial system as separate accounts. So even now with our partnership with the port, they are separated. So we did have some customers, some dark fiber customers over the last 10 years, and all of those revenues were kept separately. They weren't being subsidized other than some staff time, right? We don't have separate fiber staff. It was our IT staff that was kind of handling it. So other than some time being spent on that, we weren't exploring with water funds or we weren't investigating or doing any research or anything like that. They were, they were meant to be separate and it never really got that big in the last 15 years as far as how many customers we got. I think we had at our max three. We're down to one now because our partnership with the port, which is called Skagit Net, that's now moving in and that's a completely separate LLC that will be self-sustaining. And so we're going to slowly start backing away from a lot of those fiber customers as well.
Well, you do very good with the water. I just don't think you can serve two masters all the time.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming. And I have to say, I, a couple times I've had those tours. Each time I've gleaned something new from it. Enjoy it very much. So.
Yeah, even if you have been on one, each time you will pick up something different. So even if you've been on one, I encourage you to, when you get the email later this year, if we're allowed to all get together and drive places in vehicles, you know, I encourage you to sign up and, and get another tour.
All right. Thank you, George.
Yeah, thank you.
Before we move on, I want to call up Don, Don Wick. I had promised him, he's written a limerick for you, Aaron. And I'm going to call him up to share that with you. Want to share your limerick with him, Don? This is a, this is an honor.
Oh Lord.
This is to Aaron on his going away. There once was a fellow named Aaron. He was great from the moan of Sweare. He's been here 14 years. This will bring on the tears. But our best, our best wishes for you, we do share in.
Thank you, Don. Okay. So let's move on to staff reports. Chief Tucker.
All right. So first off, just to give you a heads up, we had an officer who was injured in foot pursuit last weekend, I think it was. Detective or Officer Hanawal, our extremely large guy, those poor old knees of his, I think have to work pretty hard. And whenever he jumped over a bicycle to grab a gal who was running, something didn't work right. So he's down. We're not sure how long he's going to be out, but it's a really bad time for us to be losing somebody because we're just still just so shorthanded. But as soon as we find out, I kind of let you know kind of where we're at with that. He's gimping around on crutches and hopefully getting in to get an MRI to make sure there's nothing seriously damaged. We have three new people starting next week. We're going to have baby police officers just toddling around the office, getting underfoot all next week. We will have four people waiting to go to the academy in the office next week. What we typically do with them during that kind of first period that they're there is we get them used to, or get all the paperwork done, get them going through some of the necessary computer stuff that they need to do prior to getting on access. Our one that's slated for the academy on the first of next month, he's been riding with officers and conducting traffic stops and all that, doing some radio prep and all that. So we give a good opportunity to give them just the here's who's who and here's who, who you contact and all that. So we're looking forward to getting them there. We're a little scared too, having a bunch of baby police officers wandering around. It's, it's kind of exciting, but scary too. And with that, we got a message from the commander of the academy. The academy's still going on. They're limiting people coming to and from the academy and maintaining the social distancing and all that. So they're carrying on, they're trying to keep that going because they know how desperately we need to get people through. And those people would just be spinning their wheels if they hadn't. They're getting all non-essential people off the academy grounds down in Burien and keeping them off campus. So they're doing everything they can until this, unless this develops further, which it seems to be developing further every day. We're shutting down flights to and from Europe and Italy shut down already. And I think almost every meeting I've had scheduled, including my trip to San Diego, I should be there right now. I mean, that's the big crime right now is I didn't get to go to San Diego. But everything is kind of gearing towards the, just kind of keeping that minimal contact. And both Lieutenant McElwath and I and Chief Klinger and Assistant Chief Wagner are going to kind of a countywide meeting with police chiefs, fire chiefs, the health department there?
Yeah.
Health department and all that at the DEM to kind of discuss how this is going to progress and how our response is going to be. And we'll pass that information on to Doug and the mayor as soon as we get that to pass on to you all to see if there's anything more to be done. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Chief Klinger.
Well, first of all, I'd like to apologize for putting the late media material up there. We failed to realize that a link in our chain was gone this week and we didn't follow up. But it's, it's sad or good to know that she's that, that needed. But we appreciate you getting that passed for us. But all I want to say tonight is if you looked to the east, we did get another step closer. We got our land cleared. The trees were falling last week. It was, it was incredible to watch those guys follow those trees. They did it in less than an hour and a half. And he was able to put every one of those trees exactly where he pointed to. So it was fun to watch. So next thing is we'll get with Nathan to get that site cleaned up.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I have a question for the chief? So George brought up about hydrants. So the flushing that happens, is that you?
The flushing that happens is through PUD. We have a little over, in our control, a little over 400 hydrants that we will be happy to give to PUD to take over for maintenance. We go out annually every year and it just, it, it's incredibly time consuming for the crews to go out and check and turn every valve on every hydrant. So it'll be nice to have a partner with that, helping us keep those things in working order.
400 hydrants, okay.
Over 400.
Thank you so much.
There we are. Thank you. John?
Thank you. I don't really have anything to report right now. Things have been really busy, but nothing that the council would be terribly concerned about. I just wanted to clarify if the late materials that I put on are on the agenda today.
All right. And we'll see them under unfinished, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we're continuing our design on the various projects we have going on. David's very close to finishing the design for the SR20 West Lane widening project, which provides the access to the new behavioral stabilization campus. And we expect to advertise that in, in April and construct that later this year. We've also started the design work on the Jameson Overlay project. We hope to have that out to bid in May. I expect to get, in fact, I did get the last review or last set of specs for the electrical systems upgrade at the wastewater plant. And I'll be putting that out to bid in the next two to three weeks as well and building that later this summer. Beyond that, there's a number of other design things. I just wanted to mention, if you haven't seen it yet, at the community center, our, our facility staff has completed the kitchen modifications in there and it looks great. I got a tour of that last week. It's in use and that's going to be a decided asset for our community. And I believe they have in, in store for next year, upgrading bathrooms. And so with that, that, that facility is going to be pretty much completely modified. They've also completed as of this last fall and spring, the patio out back. And so, yeah, it's a good looking facility. So that's all I had for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
I'll go ahead and do my comments next.
Okay.
So we'll skip over Jill for a second.
Okay, all right.
So thank you, Mayor. What I tend to like to do on some of my council reports is to break it into three different categories, is to talk about people, land, and money. So under those three categories, first people, Chief Tucker talked about the changes at the police department and the new staff that we have coming in. As we fill those positions for Proposition 1 and we look at our succession planning in the police department, there's a large mix of things going on there. So you'll hear large numbers talking about four baby police and those things in there. It's a combination of those different activities going on right now. And I know Chief will do a good job of keeping you informed of those changes as they occur. Other items under people is transition. That's the word of the week with Aaron leaving. I've had the privilege of working with him as we pass the torch and he's getting me up to speed on projects he's been working on. And it's going to be a busy couple of months, I think. Part of that transition as well is we have a new person sitting to my left here. This is Jill Scott, our new finance manager, who's going to be coming in and replacing my previous position. So she started with us on Monday and so we're already jumping right into the thick of things. I've already appreciated. She's already about two steps ahead of me all the time, which is scary. So, but it's a good thing. So I really appreciate Jill. She has experience working at Skagit County in the past. We actually worked together and I won't say how many years ago it was, but it was a while ago. And then recently comes from United General. And she did come to us from that area there. So I really want to welcome Jill and wanted a chance to introduce her to you tonight.
Welcome, Jill. It's been a pleasure. It's only been three, three days, but it's been a pleasure working with you. Yes, Mark?
Mayor, I forgot to mention the most important thing tonight, unless you would like to address it, the news we got from Senator Wagner.
Yes. If that's okay.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So we found out just this afternoon during the event for Aaron, phone call from legislature that our BNSF undercrossing project had been funded at the last minute. Apparently Senator Wagner was able to add that in when another project fell off the list. A $100,000 project fell off and he was, or a $100, a million dollar project fell off and he was able to add our $850,000 project in. It's the second to last project on the transportation supplemental budget for 2020 and 2021. So assuming the governor, governor signs that, our project is funded. And I'd just like to mention part of Aaron's last efforts here. We made two separate trips and then the mayor and I made a third trip down to legislature and knocked on a lot of doors. doors, talked to a lot of people. And another accomplishment that we can put on his cap for assisting us with that and moving along that very important project. So.
And it was really fortuitous that Ross was here.
Yes, it was.
Who he actually is kind of a liaison for us between us and BNSF. And he's been very helpful.
Indeed, yes.
So when I received the call, it was fantastic to be able to share it with everybody at the same time. So, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mark. Mr. Couch?
Doug, where are you going?
Oh.
One more.
Okay.
So under land, one of the things I wanted to bring up was the Hammer Heritage Project. It was in Go Skagit. There was an article on that?
This should be better. There we go. Okay, so the Hammer Heritage Project. Just to give you an update on it, there was an article in the Skagit paper about what's coming forward. And immediately, my phone was ringing. So I did talk with a few people. For example, Virginia Good from the farmer's market called me because she was concerned about scheduling and what that would mean. So we were able to talk about that today, actually. And what I shared with her is we are setting up a meeting with the Department of Ecology and Chevron and the city of Cedar Woolley. That'll be up in Bellingham, probably sometime the first week of April. And council already approved the agreed order, which is the outlining agreement between the parties on how to approach the Hammer Heritage Square project. So what this next step will be is we'll be getting together to talk about the work plan, identify what those target goals are, and start laying out what that construction and replacement schedule will be. So we'll be able to come back to you with more information once we've had that planning session in place, and we can start laying that out. But I just want to make sure that we're communicating with our partners who use the Hammer Heritage Square for events. It will be a big project with traffic and other issues as well, let alone just putting the park back together once the project is done. So I just want to make sure we're communicating that information to you, should you get those questions as well from people in the public. And that's what I have for my report tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Couch?
I just want to, I don't have anything to report, but I want to take this moment of personal privilege to thank Aaron for, you know, his guidance as a new council member and the projects that we got to work on. Although you're a trader, you'll be missed. And I look forward to, you know, hearing what you do over on the coast and at the port. And it's been a lot of fun, and I wish you the very best. Thank you.
Councilwoman Owen?
Thank you. I had the pleasure today of meeting our new finance director. And the first thing I noticed that there was a big improvement in looks in that office. And I told her there was a big pair of shoes left under that desk, and she's going to have a job filling those. And she kind of assured me that she wouldn't have any problem. But I personally was happy to meet you, and I'm sure we're going to profit from your appearance here. So, welcome. One more thing. I hope Aaron's leaving. That's going to leave a void, but I hope whoever buys his place will be a little bit more concerned about maple leaves. I think them leaves are still there, some of them are.
Molds.
Huh?
They're molds.
Oh, they're molds. Okay. All right. But anyway, Aaron, it's been a pleasure dealing with you. You and I never always seen eye to eye, but I think you're a great person. I think you're a smart person. And I'm sure wherever you go, you're going to be a success. So congratulations, and we'll miss you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Carnegie?
I just wanted to mention the next, so for the next two weekends, well, March 14th and March 28th, actually, Skagit Trail Builders is going to be up at Northern State again, building on that same trail, Pump House Trail. And they're looking for groups to volunteer. Cascade Job Corps usually does it. That's their top volunteer. But they have all these dates open, you know, April, from April 11th on down into June. And they're looking for guest groups to come and help with the project on building the trails up there. I think that's about it. And I just wanted to say thank you to Aaron, and thank you for your service so much, and thank you for your guidance. Good luck.
Okay. Councilwoman Kinzer?
Well, I have to echo everybody else. Aaron, thank you so much for everything you've done, and you're going to be greatly missed, and really wish you the best. And welcome, Jill. Glad to have you here. And everybody, please wash, wash, wash your hands. This is the greatest way we're going to be able to combat the spread of this virus. It's a hard shell little organism that sits around on everything that we're going to pass around with our hands. And just keep washing. Just keep washing.
All right, thank you. Councilman DeYoung?
And that's why the Tyrannosaurus Rex is extinct, is because it couldn't wash its hands. Yes, we're going to miss you, Aaron. All the institutional knowledge and around town for a cup of coffee. And your family that we've missed too. And I always appreciated your love for Cedar Woolley and your family's love for Cedar Woolley. And yes, I will miss the ice cream cart. So that's fantastic. A couple of things happening in Ward 6, Skagit Fisheries Enhancement. We had about 50 volunteers out on Saturday at the FEMA restoration site across from Riverfront Park. We had a great demographic of, from babes in arms to seniors in their 80s working. And it just hit me that those babes in arms will be able to tell their grandchildren someday, I helped plant that tree. And I think that's just really important to what Cedar Woolley is about and what's happening with that park with, of course, all the volunteers and all the sweat equity that's going into that. We planted so many trees. We planted Doug Firs. We planted big leaf maple trees there, Chuck. And we also did some red alder and also a native rose bush that I'm going to butcher. It's called Nuxa Rose. So we kind of have the tricanopy there. And folks are looking across the street to maybe see a project of taking out the blackberries along the river and seeing what we can do there. And just to echo some of the cancellations of things that were going on, the museum is closed until further notice. Also, the senior center is closed until further notice. But that does not mean that the senior center does not still need volunteers to help in the kitchen, and especially on the Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels is looking to become more important as people will be at their homes. So if you have an inclination, please call, please contact the senior center, ask for Ellen, and she'll be more than glad to set you up with a shift. They really need those volunteers. In addition, I'd invited the food bank here. I don't see them here tonight. But they're also taking preparations. They're limiting how many people will be in the collection area at a time. But there is still enough food for folks who come. So there is enough. Please go. And if you are ill, give them a call, and they'll try to work something out. Don't know the full range of how far they're go based on resources, but they have been known to make a box and deliver it. So there are resources here for food sustainability in Cedar Woolley. There is no shame or guilt in asking for help. Please ask for help to keep yourself fed, and that will help you combat any type of illness in general. Also, Cedar Woolley Rise canceled its meetings. There was a Seattle City Light relicensing on Ross Diablo and Gorge Dam that had been canceled. Looking forward to seeing that come up again. And then a big shout out to our state legislators, not only here in the 39th with Senator Wagner, Representative Sutherland, and Representative Eslick, but also the floor speech that our neighbor to the west of us, Senator Lovelace, gave for our road project with Joan Stronlinor. She really did a neighborly thing. She's on the Transportation Committee and took time to make a floor speech for that. And great teamwork. And I'm very, very pleased that even though we were told, no, 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 never going to happen, not this year, nope, can't make it happen, that we didn't give up any hope and persisted and persevered in the Cedar Woolley way. So thank you.
Councilman Allen?
To continue on the upside, I'd like to thank the street department, a lot of people in my ward. This is speaking for the ward. They're very happy. Their alleys are being graded and regravelled. A lot of them really needed the repair. And I'd like to thank Aaron for Monday, well, thank you for your work, took Doug and I out for a two-hour tour. And it was very informative, found out that we have a lot of properties in the rough that we didn't know about, the PUD property. And I learned a lot about what Cedar Woolley has, doesn't have. And Aaron, I'm glad you're not becoming a Uber driver. It was interesting.
Well, your next ride to Mark.
Councilman McGoffin?
I'd like to first welcome Jill Scott as the new finance manager, and also say goodbye and thank you to Aaron. I'd also like to thank the five high schoolers who saved the toddler last week on State Street and took care of him until the police arrived. As a father to a toddler myself, I know how quickly they can move and get into harm's way. And it's really reassuring to know that there are people like this in the environment. And so I spoke with Mayor Julia and Chief Tucker, and I'll let you guys take it from here.
All right. Would you like to join us, since you want to join us? Come on down.
All right. Councilwoman Betty President, we have Francisco Ortega with us. Francisco, can you step up here and say who you got with you back here? Who brought you in tonight?
My sister and her boyfriend.
All right, all right. So just to kind of fill you in on a little bit, we put out something on our social media, and Councilman McGoffin picked up on it, and kind of wanted to get a little bit more formal, I guess, congratulations. And this is exactly the kind of thing that makes working and living in Cedar Woolley, I mean, it's ideal. These young folks saw a problem, they stepped up and helped out somebody in need. And that's just what it's all about. I know kids this age get a lot of static, but for the most part, they're a good bunch. And this bunch especially. But I'm going to read this a little bit, and the mayor would like to say a little bit of something too, once we get done here. So there's five of them involved. Of course, they're all busy, and they're all staying home saying, staying away from COVID-19. You're at great risk. So I'm just kidding. So this is a letter of recognition and commendation from the police department. Recipients Michael Stickles, Dawson Mills, Alaric Graham, Francisco Ortega, and Matt Porter. Francisco's the only one that can make it tonight. But on 3/6/20 at about 11:50 hours, five Cedar Woolley students found a two-year-old child walking in the road alone in the 600 block of State Street. These five students took action to safely remove the child from the road and called the police. Their awareness and swift action assured the child was brought to safety. State Street is known as a busy roadway, and at the time of the incident, there were several vehicles in the immediate area where the child was walking. Officers found that the child had walked out of a house without his mother knowing, and the child was reunited with a very happy mother. Cedar Woolley Police Department would like to express our gratitude to these students, and especially Francisco here tonight, for their civic service to our community, and their specific actions saved the life of another. And like I said before, this is the kind of thing, I grew up in a very, very small town, and this is exactly what you would see. And I think this is kind of the character that everybody worries is moving away from as towns get bigger and you have less of that cohesiveness. It didn't seem to matter to these young folks. They got up and did all the right things. And I'd like to have everybody say a thank you to this young man.
So Francisco, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city, because it isn't very often that you see people who are willing to see a situation and take the responsibility upon themselves to try to figure out, especially in this case, where does this child belong? So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city for both courage and responsibility and that kind of compassion for humanity that sometimes is really rare in this world. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just have just a little bit of housekeeping for my report. First off, I want to remind everybody that the library tour dates are next week, Tuesday the 17th from 10:30 to 11:00, and Thursday the 19th from 2:00 to 2:30. I have Brendan, Councilman McGoffin, who is going to be there on Tuesday, and Councilwoman Carnegie, who's going to be there on Thursday, correct? I have those down correctly. And, you know, I encourage you to come, the rest of you to come. It's really quite exciting to see how the library is developing. And it's lovely on the inside. For not even being completed, it's really, it's really quite lovely on the inside. So please give that some thought. Also, I sent out council retreat dates, Monday, April 20th, Wednesday, April 29th, and Monday, May 4th. I did hear back right away from Councilman McGoffin. And for him, it's the 29th, and I believe Councilwoman Kinzer also agreed with that. So I have two down for Wednesday. And we'd love to hear from the others so that we can get that planned. We are going to try to keep it within the city. And it would be the times that I think that I set up was nine to three. So please give thought to that and get back to me as soon as you can. The other thing, I just want to send my thanks to Senator Wagner. I know I've been in conversation with him over the last couple of weeks, and he's sent forth different kinds of bills and ordinances that he thought might work for us as a city to get our underpass taken care of. And Mark was always gracious to look at them. And we weren't always very encouraged, really, Mark. They just weren't working out. But persevered, and so did Senator Wagner. And I want to say thanks to him, and also to Carolyn Eslick, because she worked it on the rep side. She really did. She worked it hard on the rep side. And also to Senator Lovelace, because she, when we were down there, when Mark and I were down there, did not have an appointment with her. And yet she came out of her office, and she listened as we petitioned and shared our need and our concerns regarding the underpass and how imperative it is with the project that we're working on, and how we need that as our community's growing and reshaping, we need that roadway to help maneuver traffic through town, get it off a 20, and help people get through town in an expedient manner. And she was very gracious about that. So I echo Councilwoman DeYoung's words. She really, she was, she is phenomenal. So it's great to have people down there who care about us. Also, wanted to let you know, in my conversation with Wagner, I did ask him when he could come and give us a legislative update. And he's got lots of plans, but hopefully in June. So kind of be watching for that, probably one of the council meetings that we have in June. And then I, just a couple of things here. The open house, I want to thank, so Doug and your team, they really worked hard to put that together. So Teresa and Carol and Cheryl, and I would imagine Amanda, also Tamara, Lisa, and Joanne. Am I missing somebody? Was there somebody else from the police department who did that?
Probably the fire department.
Fire department?
Maneuvering, step around.
Okay. Yeah, great, thanks. I mean, it was a wonderful open house. We wanted it to be honoring for you, Aaron. You've always honored us in what you say and do, and we're very grateful to you. You truly are going to be missed. But with all sincerity, I do wish you the very best of all that is to come, especially in your career. Yeah. So with that, one last thing. Down in Olympia, as you remember, at the last council meeting, we had high schoolers who came and talked about the bag ban and wanted us to take a look at that. And well, there's no need to do that. The legislature has already passed a bag ban, and it was pretty much in line with what I had presented before you and what some of the other cities, like La Conner, and I think Bellingham have passed. So, yeah. So if you're interested in looking that up, I think that starts in 2021. So, yeah, so if you're interested in looking that up, I think that starts in 2021. So, starts in another year. So, with that, I'm going to end the reports, and I want to open up now a talk regarding the COVID-19 virus. I did put out a statement for the city that has to do with what we wanted to do. In essence, it was a lot of what the health department had recommended to us, but I want you to know that the fire department has an excellent plan in place. In fact, Chief Klinger was right on it. I mean, I think, in fact, he's been sending the updates too, but he was right on it as far as what the fire department is going to do and the protocol that they're going to use. And it falls right in line with everything that the state and the health department and federal government is requiring. And same with the police department. You guys, you picked up on the, I guess it was the pandemic protocol that's used by, was it the sheriff's department? And so they've got that in line. Everybody is aware of what they need to do should they come into contact with somebody who has the virus. For the city, this is where your input is really important. So, for the city, what I said is that call-in option for the city council, I didn't know if you wanted to do that at the next council meeting or if you wanted to meet here. I'd like to hear your input on that. But what I said was that the city council will have the option to call in, and the public comment period will be deleted, but in its place, the public may send in their emails, send in email of their statements, and we will read that into the public record. Let's see, we have also asked the employees that if they're displaying symptoms, to be sent home. We'll send them home. And as they recover, if they want the option to telework, that will be provided. And as an additional safeguard, we're canceling the March meeting for the planning commission. And if we plan, if we delete, or if we cancel the planning commission's meeting in April, that will be posted. So, looking for direction here from the council, how you want to move forward with this? Yes, Councilman Couch?
Point of clarification on the telework. I mean, that would, obviously, common sense says that that won't be available to all employees due to whatever type of work they conduct for the city.
So, whatever type of work they do? Yeah, right. So, you're talking about if somebody, if somebody is actually works in WWTP or solid waste or whatever, they wouldn't be able to do that. Right.
So, who's, are the department heads making that decision or the city supervisor or the mayor? What, I guess what you said was quite vague. If they request that, then it will be provided. That, to me, that's not functional.
Well, so, let's, Doug and I had this conversation.
We did. And one of the steps, I'm looking at, Erin had a policy from some time ago about an N1 H1 flu epidemic, and it's a policy we've had on the books in different forms. And so, we've been going through and brushing that up and actually adapting that to this situation. And within that policy, what it talks about is the ability to telecommute, but it is at the department head's discretion. So, we do have to make sure we have minimum staffing that we're meeting and those things like that. But we'll make the accommodations that we need to do, but there is some discretionary level given to the department heads to manage that.
Thank you.
So, along the lines of gathering, they're telling us that this is actually, the COVID-19 is actually going to increase before it gets better. You're shaking your head, Brendan. I know you're working with quite a population that's probably dealing with this. But meeting as a council, how do you feel about that as far as the next meeting? Do you want us to wait and make the call? Doug and I can make the call if you'd like. How do you want to proceed?
I would support waiting for the call.
Okay.
Because it is, well, as one government leader says, you know, this is the ship that we have to steer.
Mm-hmm.
It's essential work, and I think that's what, I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth, but there's a lot of essential personnel with our police department, fire, public works. So, let's, let's be on deck with them.
I did talk, did talk to some of the other mayors to see what they're going to do, and several of them said that they were still going to meet, they were going to meet. And what they were going to do is just put the chairs six foot apart since that's what the social distancing is all about. So, yeah, and given the audience here tonight, that would probably work. So...
Start calling criminals too and ask them to isolate themselves.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like us to consult with our legal counsel to see what, if there are any exceptions to, under the Open Public Meeting Act, when there is a virus such as this circling, or if there's any, if we can, how we can best limit.
So, that's actually, Erin actually pulled that up for us. There is, it's an open meeting policy act. It's called Open Public Meeting Act General Guidance from the Office of the Attorney General that is actually out there. And, and in that, it dictates what you're supposed to do. So, I just printed this off. I haven't had a chance to read it through yet, but they're saying here, in light of this COVID-19 event, it's, the question is, what should the agencies themselves be doing? And I will send this out to you if you'd like.
Good.
Yep, so that you could have this. Didn't know if there was any concern. So, I think the good thing is that the museum is closed, senior center is closed. I don't know what the policy is for the library. That's actually ran by the district, as I understand it. So, they would have to make that call. But whatever you feel you need to do to keep yourself safe, if you wanted to call in, that certainly would be appropriate.
I would address the whole DNA question if you want. Please.
That'd be great. Why don't you?
So, the Attorney General's guidance on that is that the public still has to have a place where they can come and participate by listening. So, the recommendation would be a call-in number. So, as the mayor outlined in her memo, public comment, they're recommending essentially be suspended, other than in written format. The idea is to discourage the need to physically attend the meeting. So, it's no problem for all the council members and the mayor to call in to a conference line. Public can also call in and listen, but we do have to have a speakerphone available at a facility, ideally here, where people could come and listen on the phone. So, there would be no actual meeting, but there could be people who theoretically don't have phones who could come here and listen. So, the memo also details with a bit more precision how meetings can be delayed and rescheduled. And the other recommendation is to decrease the agenda items. So, if you don't need reports, don't do reports. Just do your core business, limit public comment, go remote.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. McGoffin.
Madam Mayor, I would support coming to the next meeting with the distancing, but my concern is, I know in a couple of meetings before, we talked about upgrading the technology in this room. Do we have that capacity to handle multiple people calling in?
Not yet. But, but the difference is, what technology we're missing is for all of you to be here and somebody else to be on the phone and effectively participate. That will happen with the AV upgrade. This is different because none of you would be here. So, it would be a standard call-in line from your home. So, I think there would be no issue with the ability for the eight elected officials to participate. I think the mayor could run it with a go-to-meeting-type format where for those who need to be unmuted, they can raise their hand electronically, she can unmute staff, or, you know, maybe it's this group that's all available to speak freely. You know, it'll be a challenge to run the meeting because you lose all the visual cues, but then the public can be on board with a, with a listen-only feature. So, I don't think it'll be a problem because we're not tying into this system at all.
And if we are just taking care of the business, just making sure that the consent agenda and whatever else may need to be looked at, if we stuck to the business rather than giving reports, not unless it's something that's really important to know. Yes, yes, Councilman.
Madam Mayor, I support just kind of playing it by ear for now, for another week or so, to see what the severity progresses into and then go from there.
Sounds good. So, are you okay with me making the call as far as what we should do?
Yeah.
All right. So...
Do you need a motion for that? Because I'm happy to do that.
I don't, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
Sounds like consensus. Okay.
Yeah. No. And we'll just see how this progresses. Like I said, every day, we're getting updates, and I'm sure you're listening to the radio and hearing the updates all the time. So, we just, you know, I think the biggest thing, what the governor said, and I really agree with him, is that it's not that we're trying to scare people, it's more we're trying to slow the progression of the virus and trying to keep everybody safe. So, yeah, exactly. Wash your hands. Yep. And don't touch your face. Exactly right.
That's the hard part.
Clean and disinfect all surfaces.
Is this a good time to talk about?
Yeah, I know you had a few things that you wanted to bring up regarding the COVID virus. You want to share something?
Yeah, and thank you for letting us, let me preview with it and getting some feedback before the meeting, so I'll just bring that up. I do want to preface what the World Health Organization Director General, Dr. Tedros, has said. He said, "You cannot say this loudly enough or clearly enough or often enough. All countries can still change the course of this pandemic. This is the first pandemic that can be controlled." So, I thought that was important advice to listen to, and that we're just not protecting, you're just not protecting yourself by working from home and minimizing your travel and washing your hands. You're protecting people in our community who may have a greater risk of complications from the coronavirus than you do. So, we're all in this together, right? We're all in this together. So, I did want to talk about, made mention about the NBA suspending their season. One of the great things about Cedar Woolley is all the small businesses, and we see relief being available, especially with unemployment security division for employees. And then that has spawned conversations I've had throughout the community about, well, what about us, the small businesses? And I think these are great conversations to have. And so, I have, yes, a five-point suggestions for consideration. I'm just putting out ideas for us to look at, whether they're now or down the road or to, you know, just ideas. So, I appreciate that time, Madam Mayor. So, the first one that folks had is, hey, can I get relief on my BNO taxes? Cedar Woolley doesn't have BNO taxes. It's one of the great places, great reasons to have a business in Cedar Woolley. Cedar Woolley is still open for business. Come do your business in Cedar Woolley. But as a small business, we don't have business and occupation tax. Number two, the Small Business Administration, known as the SBA, has an economic injury disaster loans, and that was recently authorized by this Congress. And there are steps that the city of Cedar Woolley would need to, to kind of plan the determination of who's eligible for those loans, what that interest rate would be, and how quickly they could be granted. So, things to consider. Number three, Small Business Stabilization Fund. Some communities have this. It's a one-time grant up to $25,000, and they're designated to help stabilize an income-qualified microbusiness of five employees or less after a disruptive event like a global pandemic. So, it's something to consider. Number four is three parts under the utility payment relief, and we gave a little preview with George. But provide flexible payment, payments for both businesses and residents, customers or on a customer-by-customer basis, and these plans would allow customers to avoid potential utility shut-off, which I think is critical. And then consider for discussion, ordinance to waive late fees for past due utility bills is something to think about. And then, what's that?
Have a sunshine date.
Yeah, have a sunshine date on that as well. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that. And then possibly a utility discount program. As we had talked earlier, just having one application that someone could have that the city could look at, the PUD could look at, PGSound Energy could look at, Cascade Gas could look at. And this would be an open application to the general public beyond seniors and the disabled on a limited basis. And I just threw out a date of April 3rd because that seems to be some things that are put out there in other municipalities, and, you know, with a possible deadline extension. So, that would be a discount program with one application, sort of a master application. And so, everyone would be on the same page. And then finally, Small Business Recovery Task Force. And thank you, George, for being open to this before the meeting and helping me develop this a little bit now, where the city of Cedar Woolley's Business Development Committee and other prominent business development stakeholders would be involved, as he dawns in the room. So, this would be charged with providing additional ideas for programs and interventions to support small businesses through this period of crisis. These are just ideas, and also I welcome any, and that's all caps, any advice, feedback, and information regarding these pressures facing small businesses and the type of relief most immediately needed to address your particular situation. So, thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. And certainly within King County, Kingsdale, Homewood, and Pierce County, small businesses are suffering greatly. I think we're pretty fortunate here in Skagit County that we've only had one outbreak. It doesn't mean that there's not going to be more, but it doesn't seem to have impacted our small businesses yet. However, these are excellent opportunities, excellent opportunities should develop into something that could really threaten the life of a, of a small business. So, thank you for sharing that, Councilman DeYoung. All right. With that, I'm going to move into public comment. It is 8:26. You have three minutes. Please give your name and address.
Are any of the council people doctors? I'm Dr. Mercer, and I taught on...
Can you give your address, please? Your address?
15436 Southeast 20th Place, Bellevue.
Okay.
But I have been up here since June trying to establish my nonprofit Volvo-only car-rental and taxi service. And what keeps me coming back is the atrocious homeless situation in Skagit County because you don't have any housing. And I am a retired osteopathic physician, and those who are ignorant of history are condemned to repeat it. The flu epidemic of 1918 brought osteopathy into the public eye because we were able to save people from the flu with lymphatic pump. So, if you know somebody has a flu, get them to an osteopath who can remember how to do lymphatic pump. But the other history you are forgetting is that Linus Pauling taught you how to deal with the coronavirus more than 52 years ago. I listened to him when I was at Oregon State. 1,000 milligrams of vitamin C every day prevents the common cold, and the common cold is caused by the coronavirus. So, this is just a variation of a virus that's been around for a long time, and I'm very angry at how this has gotten all blown out of proportion, like you say. Probably, we're going to do okay. And there have been 55,000 deaths from the ordinary flu. And how many deaths have there been from overdoses in this county? And I suspect that there are going to be far more deaths from overdoses because you have no treatment programs. You have, I'm out there with the homeless. I'm out there at 3:00 AM in the morning when there is a physically, mentally handicapped person at the Mount Vernon Police Station, and nobody does anything because there isn't any place to put the person. And I just went up to north, to the Pioneer today and found out you have 141 beds, but not enough counselors to do it.
Just, just a few more, just a few more seconds.
Right.
Your time's almost up.
So, what I'm asking you to do is put your money where it needs to be and jump on your legislators and get inpatient beds, halfway houses, psychiatrists, and detox centers in every county, in the city and the county. And the state has to pay for the 80% of homeless people that are either mentally ill or addicted or both.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ian Walker, 404 North Township Street, Cedar Wully. So I live on the corner of John Leininger and Highway 9, and there have been complaints from the city and different people about our house and the trees along our, our road. Those trees are grandfathered in. We were nice enough to meet the code that has now been met. They came out and cut down the trees. They're now wanting to come down and cut another 30 feet of our trees. This is a safety issue. These trees are there to protect our children from the busy road there. We have our family and a bunch of neighbor kids who come out and jump in our front yard on trampolines. You know, we were nice enough to meet the code. We didn't have to because we're grandfathered in. Somebody called my wife and said they're, they're going to take us to court over safety issues. The code needs to be changed then. We're lowering the speed limit along the road. Cutting our trees is not going to change the view. You have to pull forward. There's an angle thing, you know? So a triangle, right? Keep cutting the angle, you're not going to get it changed, but if you pull forward, it gives you a lot more view. So they just need to pull forward further. I don't know what else to say, but thank you.
And we'll have somebody give you a call. So actually, we were advised by our lawyer to clear those trees. And it has to do with a case that has actually happened, where a city was sued because of the variants. But will, will you do that, Doug? So Doug Merriman, expected a call from Doug Merriman, and he'll be able to explain to you exactly what's going on.
Okay.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to get up and, and thank Erin. My name's Eric Johnson, 910 North Murdock Street. 10 years ago, a wide-eyed 23-year-old decided to try to fill a council seat and got beat out by Keith Wagner. I don't know why. It's not like he's done anything since. But it was nice to have Erin. He was always very informative. He was very gracious, very knowledgeable, which I think he kind of demonstrated this evening. And just want to thank you for your friendship and your service to the city.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right, it is 8:32, and I will close public comment, and we will move into unfinished business. So why don't we start, Mr. Coleman, with your late materials, the proposed comprehensive plan amendments, 2020 docket?
All right. So the late materials was just a follow-up to the 2020 Comprehensive Plan docket item topic that we had at the work session last Wednesday. I apologize if you haven't had a lot of time to look at it. What it says is, unless the council wanted to, has thought of something that they wanted to add to the 2020 council at this time, we could just, we're proposing just to set the docket to include the two rezones, which are described in here. And that would be the only thing that the Planning Commission would work on as part of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. So that wouldn't take nearly as long as the 2019 Comprehensive Plan update cycle, which we, the council will be looking at possibly for the last time today, should you choose to take action. So the recommendation is just to make a motion to include on the 2020 Comprehensive Plan docket, the two rezone requests identified in this March 11th council memo.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to include the 2020 Comprehensive Plan docket, the two rezone requests identified in the March 11th, 2020 council memo.
Second. Okay. All right. We have a motion by Councilman Couch, seconded by Councilman Carnegie, to make the motion to include the 2020 Comprehensive Plan docket. And is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, easy enough. Should we move on then to the 2019 Comprehensive Plan document amendments?
All right, we're on a roll. That was possibly one of the fastest motions I've ever seen. Thank you. This one, we've talked about quite a bit. This is, technically, this is the 2019 Comprehensive Plan docket amendments. So this is what the Planning Commission worked on for the past year. But really, what's on it is updates to the housing element and the development regulations to address ADUs, accessory dwelling units. So I made a couple of minor adjustments to the language in here, based on what the council had, what we had discussed at the council work session last week, very minor tweaks, just to make it accurate. And so we're asking for a motion to, to pass the two ordinances. One, making updates to the housing element, which is part of the Comprehensive Plan, and another ordinance that would make amendments to the municipal code.
Okay.
We did have a little bit of a discussion about fees. So what, what we're going to do, what's proposed here is not to set any fees tonight, but to see what the city council chooses to do, and should the council approve the, these ordinances. What we've done, as we've said, they'll take effect July 1st, 2020. That gives the council plenty of time to dig into fees should be passed this ordinance.
Okay. So we...
I guess one last point. You know, we had, we had, council wanted to know what happened with the state legislature. They had worked on a couple of accessory dwelling units legislative items. One of those died. The other passed. However, it passed with almost no teeth. So should the, should, should the council pass this ADU ordinance that is presented, we'll have it approved in a timeframe where none of the, the legislative changes would affect it. So it says, what the ADA legislation says is, any ordinances passed about having to do with ADUs for four years prior to the adoption date of the ADU legislation through the state, did not have to follow those state rules. Did that make sense? Yes.
So it's not, and so this will not be impacted by the ADU that was passed on the legislature?
That is correct.
Okay. So the motions are on page 54 of your packet. Any further discussion or questions regarding the ADUs? Okay, do I have a motion then to adopt ordinance 195320, amending the housing element of the Cedar Wully Comprehensive Plan to address ADUs?
I make that motion to adopt ordinance 195320, amending the housing element of the Cedar Wully Comprehensive Plan to address ADUs.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilman Owen, to pass the, or to adopt the ordinance 195320, amending the housing element of the Cedar Wully Comprehensive Plan to address ADUs. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second motion, which would be 195420, would be an ordinance amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code and specify where and under what rules ADUs may be allowed. Any discussion or questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance...
1954?
1954-20, amending the Cedar Wully Municipal Code to specify where and under what rules ADUs may be allowed. Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I point a personal privilege to thank the Planning Commission and John and his staff for all the hard work they put into that last year?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I believe Board Member Johnson back there, thank you, you're on the Planning Commission. Thank you very much for your hard work. All right. And if you could thank your board, it'd be appreciated. So I want to, if you haven't already seen it, under information, under the information-only items...
There's one more item on the agenda.
Is there? Am I missing it? Oh, update to the building and planning and engineering, sorry, the fees. The fees. There it is. Okay.
Well, this is totally, this is not terribly, not actually related. This is to address just needed changes to our, our fee schedule. We do this from time to time.
In the building department?
We, yes, in, in the building, planning, and engineering department, just to keep up with actual costs and to add new fees for services that are requested. So I added several new types of permits and, and actions based on needs that we've seen over the past couple of years. I did slip in a fee for ADUs and conjecture that, and this is just, would be for the ADU permit fee. It does not address impact fees, general facility charge fees, anything like that. Just for a permit fee should, when somebody wants to go through the process of permitting an ADU. It seemed like a good time to put it on here, so we wouldn't have to update this resolution in the future.
All right.
How did you come up with that figure for an ADU?
Basically based on about five hours of, of work, not really knowing how many hours it's going to take. We went with a fairly conservative, if, a conservative number. We wanted to keep it low to make it possible for people to actually go through this process. If we're finding that we're spending 20 hours doing administration for this and future follow-ups and whatnot, then I could come to the city council at a future time when we're updating this in the future, for whatever reason, and ask if the council would seek, would approve increasing the fee. But we're just going to start at 2:50 now to get the ball rolling.
Was this compared with other cities, John?
Yeah.
And was it comparable?
Yes.
Okay.
What's it, it's, what's the fee for, for single-family residents?
So, a single-family residence would be based on the building square footage and plan review and, you know, like reviewing, reviewing the construction plans. So that would be for a building permit. That's a different process, and, you know, that's, that's a detailed thing. This would be a separate administration of just the, the right to have an accessory dwelling unit. So it's, it's less, less work looking at detailed plans as much as just kind of getting it through the process and, and keeping track of who has an ADU.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, the motion is on page 113 of your packet. If the council is ready to make a motion, it is Resolution 104320, if you wish to do so, and it would be a resolution adopting an updated building, planning, and engineering fee schedule. Is there a motion? This is the second reading, it looks like.
The number can, Madam Mayor?
Resolution 104320.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 104320 of the city council, of the city of Cedar Wully, Washington, adopting a building, planning, and engineering fee schedule.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilwoman Kinser, seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. One opposed, Councilman Couch. All right. And then it looks like, it looks like I can move on. And I just wanted to point out, under the information-only items, please take a look at number two. It's a letter of appreciation to all of you from Aaronburg. It's a great letter. Thank you, Erin. And if there is nothing else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, it's so late, but in the good of the order, I had two things. Skagit Watershed Council, of which I'm the representative for the city, they canceled their meetings until further notice. And then there was a question, it was posed to me from neighbors, that since we're not doing fingerprinting or concealed pistol licenses because of the coronavirus, and also that the Skagit County Sheriff isn't doing fingerprinting and CPLs because of the coronavirus, what, what other options are there for folks in, in this area to get a concealed pistol license? And if we could just work on that a little bit and get that out, that'd be good.
Yeah, we can see how the coronavirus progresses. We don't know how long it's going to be, but yeah, if it's something that's extensive, yeah, I think that's something that could be looked at.
All right, thank you so much.
That could have been under your report, too. You could have done that under your report.
I, I, I'm sorry, but I forgot about it, and I brought it up now. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. All right, if you have nothing else, we are adjourned.